Selectmen's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. And this is just an observation, but I wanted to say it after the cameras were running. Did you get down to see the Methodist Church?
I did. They're doing a great job. Debbie is incredible. She just, she knows how to, I can see how she was a development officer up at Indian Mill.
It's really, really, really quite impressive. I'd recommend anybody keep their eyes open. Everyone is open for viewing and seeing. It's really impressive. All right. First order of business is an approval of the meeting minutes. And they are the meeting minutes for March 24th, 2014. All were present, so all may vote. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll second with a brief discussion.
Sure.
Just, I read them through and remember I had, I don't know how thorough I see you. I sometimes think you record every word, you know. I remember I had mentioned that I would like to have the Historical Commission in full sometime.
Oh, yeah, that was just in the past couple of meetings. This is March 24th.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, gotcha.
We'll see if it's there.
I did read these minutes and it wasn't there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is, this is March 24th.
Yeah. Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I take a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And they're actually already on the table the refunds. Here are the motor vehicle.
We have a motor vehicle excise tax refund for fiscal year 13 in the amount of $41.69. And a motor vehicle refund for fiscal year 14, $434.06. Do I have a motion to approve those two refunds?
So move.
Second.
Just one question. Now, these come from the assessors and they've got it all figured out.
They come from the assessors, they go to the accountant.
So, I mean, then they're taking, all right. So, only your checks and balances.
Yeah. All right, then I take a, I'd take a vote to approve.
Aye.
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 Is this in there as a separate?
This is separate only because that was my pre-employment examination. So, she said for me to sign it, but I want to have two of you sign it.
All right. I think we, the next matter before us is the appointment of Kevin Trongon as a full-time police officer. And when I was speaking to the chief last week, I said we'd like to have, just, you know, for a quick say hello and so on when, when we're appointing a full-time officer.
Absolutely. Thank you. Just to give you a little background on how our process went, we started, once we found out that Duncan Baum would be retiring, we advertised the position. We ended up with about 40 applicants and quite a range. Four of our current part-time officers applied. We had a sergeant from the NYPD that applied. We had a SWAT tactical officer from Daytona Beach, Florida that applied. It was quite the range. People that brought, I guess, maybe an exceptional skill set, but maybe not the skill set that we necessarily needed here. We were able to narrow that, that group down to eight people that we chose to interview. Unfortunately, prior to the interviews, one of the people withdrew because they were hired by Sterling PD. So, we ended up interviewing seven. The interview panel consisted of Sergeant Geis, Officer Baum, a couple of residents, Marshall Tate and Priscilla Hogan and myself. We were very fortunate. We interviewed four of our own people as well as three outsiders. And it was very good to see because six of those seven really, really did well, including all four of our internal candidates. At the conclusion of the interviews, one of our internal candidates actually withdrew and she will be appointed in the very near future as a police officer in Concord. So, we were left with three of our own people and three from the outside. We did, Officer Sharke did background investigations. And one thing that's very nice is when you take someone like Kevin, who has worked for, you know, the community for nine years already. We're not really worried about skeletons in the closet. We already know who we're dealing with. And at the conclusion of the background investigations, Kevin came out on top and we're proud to present him to you tonight.
Very pleased.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks very much.
Yeah. I really, I feel strongly about someone that's been in the town and proved themselves, you know. You like Berlin?
Love Berlin.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Small town?
Yeah.
We're going to keep it that way?
Absolutely.
Why do police officers?
Let's get rid of those apartments, you know, that stuff. It's up to you to do that.
He doesn't mean you have to turn people away at the borders.
Between the lines on that.
Here's the burning question I have. Why do police officers shave their heads?
Well, I shave mine for a personal reason, but, I don't know, maybe it's just the look.
Dave, Dave does it. It's a big thing with police officers.
I think we'll find that most of the officers that shave their head don't shave all of it.
Yeah?
Some of it, they don't have a choice.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe all of our own story as to how we got there.
I, I asked, I was, I was just going to say, I just think maybe selectmen should shave their heads. I'm almost afraid to ask, are there any other questions?
We're going to close the borders and...
And, yeah. And everybody's got to shave their heads. That's how you know they come from Berlin. All right.
I'm going to try to keep it...
I'm glad we got that.
You look good.
All sorted out.
As I said, for the last nine years, I really enjoy being here and, you know, serving, servicing the people of town and being supportive. And I've always been able to receive that back from the community. And I'm very happy to be in this, at this point in my career. It's always been my long-term goal to get to this point, so it's a, it's a big day for me and my family, so.
Excellent. Well, we're very pleased to welcome you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Where do you live, Kevin?
I live in Clinton. Born and raised there. And my wife, my wife works at the courthouse.
Oh, yeah.
And she's been there for seven years in the clerk's office, so it's a nice, it's a nice bit.
Yeah.
You know.
Clinton's always been a sister community sort of, you know.
Right.
When I was young, a lot of kids went to high school there from Berlin.
Yeah.
Particularly West Berlin.
Yeah.
Great. Excellent. Well, I would accept a motion on a vote to appoint Kevin as a full-time police officer. I shall move.
Second.
And if there's no, there are no other questions, then I would call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Process, yeah.
All right.
Hey, Tom. Good to see you.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to stick around today.
All right. Yeah, you can.
Get back to work.
You can because Kevin's not going to let anybody into town.
He would have been, he would have been helpful if he stopped the car from flipping over all night, so.
Thanks again.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we need a motion on this or?
On the rescue, oh, no.
No.
We have a request for appointment, reappointment really, of the members of the rescue squad. There are 37 members. There's a list here, but I don't think we need to go through all of them. I'd accept a motion to reappoint. Who submitted that? Denny?
Denny did.
Yeah, okay. I would move. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
You signed the Kevin letter.
I did sign the Kevin letter. I think I signed.
Just put this in there.
That's fine, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, we have, actually, no, I'm going to, this is the discussion of the scope.
I have a scope thing ready.
Okay. And I'm, but I'm going to put that aside because we have like two minutes before the 7:15 meeting and I'll see.
Excuse me, Judy, did you go through this?
No.
The payroll?
Yeah.
I did sign payroll.
Oh, you did? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's, you don't have to do that one anymore.
Right. So, Mary, change it to slip.
Yes, yes. June appears that, I will tell her when she comes back to vacation. It may be that way next week too and then...
Okay. Instead, I'll, I'll jump one up, which is the discussion of the billing of the mitigation payment from Highland Commons. I had a conversation last Thursday with Jed Hayes, who called me at the office, but I didn't have very much time to talk to him. And the way this thing has gone is my first thought, my first understanding of the question was that Sullivan and Hayes had some question as to what was sort of year zero for purposes of the figure that you applied the CPI to. And the understanding of the town is that that was the fiscal year 2013 payment. And that the CPI began to apply with the 2014 payment. And I sent them a note to that effect. It then appeared that there was just a discussion about some math. Has this note gone to them? The one that, that's attached here that I wrote on the 28th of April?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. We should, we should see because I think originally...
Well, that was just saying that CPI was per the second modification agreement.
Right. And initially, I thought that was the question, which is why I wrote the letter. Then it appeared as though there was some other misunderstanding. Now, it really appears as though that first understanding was correct.
Yep.
So, if this letter hasn't been sent, we should send it to them, but copy Jed Hayes. Jed Hayes said it had been sort of kicked upstairs to him and he hadn't had a chance to read the file yet, but he was in California and was coming back. Said he would do it and that he would call me this week to sort it out. So, that's, that's where we are with this. But if...
Dennis asks me about it daily.
I actually spoke to Dennis at the parade yesterday and I gave him that update, so. I think we'll, we'll sort this out, but I think that is, that exactly what we responded to in the letter is the question.
Is it a $25,000 or $28,000 delta? Is that what the question is?
I think it is, yes. And of course, that compounds year after year as well because you start, you know, that 28 gets added a year earlier and gets compounded. So, you know, over time, it makes a difference and we'll, we'll chat about it. But my memory is really clear that when we were discussing this, we said we would not apply the CPA to the first payment because even though the agreement was being amended, the whole idea was the first year's payment was a base and then everything else after that was, was subject to the CPI, so. And the language in the agreement says that the CPI applies from and after 2014. And to me, that means it applies for the first time in 2014 and thereafter. So, we will chat about that and I'll report back. All right. And now we have a 7:15 appointment. Come on, Marcus.
Yes.
Yes, I do.
And I'm here to get your support for something way back when the champagne gas pipeline was proposed to go through Berlin. I got involved in fighting off that pipeline and of course it didn't go through. This was going to be a heck of a lot harder to push back, but I think it's possible. And so, I'm looking for your support and I put together a possibility of actions that we can take, including the formation of an ad hoc committee to work on this project. And these are some of the steps I thought that we could take, you know, to get this accomplished. There is a growing, very powerful movement both here in Massachusetts and New Hampshire against this pipeline. And right now, there's a citizen's petition going through Massachusetts against it. I also have properties up there. New Hampshire has passed resolutions opposing it. Several new Massachusetts towns are also in opposition. And my, my feeling is that there's sentiment here in Berlin against deciding of a pipeline through Berlin. There's no economic benefit to Berlin for this pipeline. My understanding is that this is gas that needs to be treated before it can be used, but I'm not absolutely positive.
I don't know about that. I do know however, because, and, and I think it's posted, is it posted to our Facebook page?
Yes.
Yeah.
I gave her a copy just now.
Okay. We have, and I'll just say this because, you know, for people who are in the, on the television audience, if you will, that we did, I did meet with Representative Norton and with some representatives of the pipeline company a couple of weeks ago and did ask some basic questions and posted a report. What is, what is absolutely clear and is in that report is that this is, if you will, a wholesale level pipeline that will run through Berlin and will connect to a local distribution company in Shrewsbury. So, the only way that this gas is going to get back to Berlin is if some other, if you will, retail distribution company agrees to lay pipe. So, it's, you know, it's, it's due to the nature of the pipe, not to my knowledge, the nature of the gas. That means that none of this gas will be delivered, you know, from this pipeline to Berlin.
I put that on you.
Okay.
Okay. So, that leaves us with the question of whether this is something that you would entertain in New Hampshire.
Mary Ann, you didn't get a chance to talk too much about this, but she sent me sort of the same thing that she gave you. And this is the way to go appointing a committee to kind of make it more legal for us to meet with other boards and things like that. I don't know if you'd support, support doing that. I know you guys have already approved or voted against allowing them to survey town property. And I guess my biggest concern is sort of Mary Ann's second bullet here about, you know, getting a list of the people that are in the path and getting them on board with any information we can give them and hopefully, you know...
I think you could just go to the assessors right now and she would give you the information that she has.
Yes. They don't necessarily have to give it to us, but if we're a town committee, it gives us standing, which is really the important issue here. We can go to our boards, we can go to our towns. It gives us standing, you know, at a, at a governmental level, as if we're just citizens. It's much more difficult to achieve these goals if we're just citizens, as opposed to having support of town boards.
Well, first of all, as a citizen, you can get any information out of government, you know that.
Yeah.
But I personally don't see any downside to give the official standing to go at it. I mean, you're a study committee. It isn't, we're not saying we want you to go in and fight this thing. We don't want you going and advocate for it. You're going in and looking at it and studying it, coming up with the pros and cons of it, right?
Yes.
I think just the one thing I sort of thought about and I don't want to put a negative spin on it, but I, you know, if you're directly affected by this, is there any kind of recompension from opposing it, you know, publicly? For me, as a property owner or whatever, you know, I mean, it's not going through my property, but it's within 200 feet of it. You just have to think about, I mean, I just sort of think about those things, like whether there'd be recompenses from the company, gas line company or things like that.
Moving a little closer to your property, is that...
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Literally, they can't threaten you.
Right.
You know, they can't do that. And, you know, and the other part of this, and this, I got this idea from several other communities that have called a special town meeting that basically says, you know, the town is opposed to this, which is what the bottom part of this is.
Well, you do know that...
I didn't bring that up at our annual town meeting and decided against it.
We are, have we heard back from them on a date for coming in?
It's in there. They're now, don't want June, so we were working to come up with some June dates and BMS availability for June.
Yeah.
We found four days and his response back was try July and August now, which I told him was not what you wanted because it's too deep into the summer, but that's what he wants. He's asking tonight, as of this afternoon, for July and/or August dates that you want them to come.
Give, can you give me his number?
Yep.
Okay. Because we said we would be flexible. We've scheduled this out. And I'm actually starting to become annoyed with this. They said that Mondays were difficult.
Yep.
We gave them flexibility for other dates. If they're that disinterested in the pipeline, then they should stop bothering us and withdraw the route, is my feeling. If they can't, if they can't afford the time to come over at a time that is reasonably prompt and reasonably convenient to the community, then, you know, my feeling is they're showing a disinterest with process. And to my mind, a disinterest with process is a disinterest with project. And I'm not particularly interested in, in supporting or working with people who take that attitude. It annoys me greatly. Before I heard that, I was inclined to say that I would rather wait until we had an informational meeting. I mean, you know, keep this on the table, but have an informational meeting and understand, you know, you know, have everybody understand what it is. And then, you know, elicit an ad hoc committee after the meeting because there will be more information and maybe more people will be interested. But if they're not going to be a prompt, I'm sort of inclined to be prompt. And if there are citizens that are interested in studying this and representing the public interest...
Then go for it.
Then let them go for it. It's my feeling.
There's an organization in Massachusetts, there's a similar one in New Hampshire, there's a similar one in, in New York. No Fracked Gas in Mass.org. And they, it's an amazing site. There's a lot of contention about this whole project. And there's a lot of information out there about it too. My feeling is that they're not being up front with what their intentions really are.
That's not surprising.
If we were going to do an ad hoc, you'd need to have some sort of like mission statement or what it is that we expect of you. And then we'd need to have like a size of the committee and, I don't know, a report or some, some type of agenda that you're going to be working on.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We work, you know, in conjunction with your board and other boards. And hopefully, there would be representation from town boards as well as citizens at large.
Could you get us that mission statement next week? Put together a mission statement?
Yes, I'm sure I can do that.
Roughly, the number of people who you might try to get on it?
The still fracked gas in Mass, their mission is to stop the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure.
Yeah, and I think we need to sort that out. I mean, because are we talking about an ad hoc committee to gather facts? Are we talking about an ad hoc committee to oppose the importation of gas as a result of fracking? Those are two different issues. Which one did you have in mind?
First, from a personal level, if I can be quite honest with you, I don't, I don't believe that fracked gas should be allowed at all. You know, I mean, the consequences of it are pretty severe. You know, we should really be taking a good look at that.
Mary Ann, if you put your committee together and re-sanction it, you know, you go in and you gather more, I, I know you, so we're classmates through grammar school. She was one of the smart ones at the school.
So are you.
So, thank you. So, you're going to gather information. You can't go ahead and long into it with a, with a cause, so to speak, you know, with an ax to grind, kind of gather the information.
Gather the information.
And try to select a wide variety of thoughts into the committee and gather information, right?
Right. That's basically, I mean, I told you how I feel personally, but my real goal is to gather as much information so that we can act in a rational and sensible way about what is best for Berlin.
And you realize that there may be, I mean, one could take a vote expressing public sentiment about it, but none of this may actually, and some things may require a vote of various town boards of the town. But it may be that the whole process doesn't act, you know, doesn't actually involve, you know, a vote as part of the, you know, as part of the process or approvals.
Right. It might not, but, you know, I'm putting it out there. I mean, this would be non-binding in any...
Oh, yeah, no, no. And I'm just, and this is, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that informational, you know, coordinative, helping to interface with, with the, well, with the other town boards and with the, with Morgan Kinder.
Right.
Although I have to say that interfacing with them so far has been very easy.
Right.
Because they don't interact with us. They don't...
That's what's been happening, I think, with all of the sort of forums and things that have been tried to be set up in other towns is they just don't.
They don't show.
They don't show. They don't come. So, they're, whether we're going to have any better luck, who knows?
Is there any group in Bolton that's working on this?
No, but we were wondering, I was wondering, I was thinking that from that, that meeting that we had, there was a couple of Bolton residents there.
And who were...
Is it, are we able to get the names of the people that were at that meeting?
That, when Representative Norton, yes.
Yes.
She, Mary has her...
There was no one from Bolton at the meeting with Representative Norton?
No, in these buttons, maybe.
In the selectmen, at the end of the hallway, there was.
Oh, yes, yes, got you. Sorry.
I think there wasn't that.
You know, and we do want to, I mean, one of the objectives is to work with other communities, you know, it does specify, you know, working with the conservation, the planning board, the historical, you know, work cooperatively with other town committees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the select board, of course.
You know, just specifically, I would feel more comfortable with, like, Mary Ann, your fifth bullet, for example, work with groups that oppose the pipeline. You know, work with groups that have an interest in the pipeline or something, you know. If you're looking at the fifth bullet there, then you go down to the sixth bullet, would be a lot of, call special town meeting for a town vote opposing the pipeline, your town vote on the pipeline.
Yeah, I guess, I would be, think about this. I would be more comfortable, actually, with an initial charge that only went down to the one, two, three, the first four bullets and then let's see, let's see what happens as a result of that process.
There you go.
Okay. That would, that's...
You know, let's take it step by step. Let's try them first and then hang them instead of hanging them first and then trying them.
Right, that's right. There's no bias in all of those.
Yeah. I think those, those four are uncomfortable with. And I'm willing to contemplate any of the others, but I kind of want to, I really do feel like I want a little more information.
Oh, we do. Before we go ahead.
Yeah. Which is why I...
We need to know.
Yeah.
Because it's costly to the town to hold a special town.
Right. Oh, yes. You know, and you need to know the information because there's so much out there. I honestly have heard so many things. I don't know exactly what is true and what's not.
Exactly. And that's why, until I had the, you know, the update that we in fact weren't going to have a meeting, you know, in, you know, a couple of weeks, I was going to say, why don't you come in the week after, you know, come to that, that meeting and then why don't you come the week, you know, the week after that? But if that's not happening until July, I'm, I'm certainly willing to have an ad hoc committee that focuses on those first four bullets. How do you feel about that?
I think right up the first four is your mission statement, come up with a number of people that you want and bring it...
and bring it back next week and you'll be off and running.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks for taking the time and being interested, come in.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Before we move on, does anybody else have anything they want to speak to us about briefly? Any kind of issue or, oh, rather than I want people hanging out till nine or nine thirty to, all right? Thanks. All right. Then we will return to the agenda and pick up that, the piece that I skipped over, which was the discussion, discussing this, the scope of a public safety study.
Yep.
Okay, do you want to take that one over since you've done some?
So, I went through about, I don't know, 15 different studies that are out on the internet. Usually they're either fire or they're police, some of them are a combination. And I came up with this. It's just kind of a skeleton to work on.
Do you want to read it?
Review and comment on current fire, police and rescue organizational staffing structure and recommend optimum organizational structure for public safety for immediate, maybe that should be current, and five, 10-year time span include potential ca, potential for cost savings and consolidation of functions. Identify and evaluate options for fire, police, fire, rescue and police using call volume, coverage area, response time and compare to alternative existing models and appropriate industry benchmarks. Look at mutual aid agreements at Solomon Pond Mall agreements. Identify any current efficiencies as, should be as well, and as well areas to improve efficiency services. Cost estimate for the town for, to stay as is, to combine fire and rescue, to work with neighboring towns as a regional department or through intermunicipal agreements. Any other possibilities? How would any of the above scenarios be implemented? Legal, equipment, personnel, timeline, staffing building needs, other associated costs. How will increased commercial growth affect services in the next one to four years? Include facilities, fleet and equipment, staffing levels, communication, organization structure, analysis of current reporting methodology, reliability of statistical information, community risks, vulnerabilities and concerns, and the most cost efficient structure while minimizing risk to the town. So, I just kind of put those out there.
Yep.
I figured we could give them to the police chief, the fire chief, rescue chief, they could put in. But I was trying to just come up.
No, I think.
After reading all of these scopes of work.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I, I read that, it's, it's good work, Judy, good research you put into that. I think, so you said, we really haven't formulated it yet. We're going to ask the different chiefs to look at these and be a little more specific.
Yeah, I mean, right now, what we're trying to do is develop a scope of work. And I think, you know, we'll also, once we submit it to the, you know, possible consultants, we may get, you know, we may also get input, input from them on that. But yes, right now, trying to get a broad scope of work so that when we have money to spend, starting July first, we can kind of hit the ground running.
One thing I'm particularly interested in is doing a real good, honest analysis of the calls, of these call statistics, what they really mean. And if we can't do anything about it, at least I think it should be publicized. I'll give you an example of one of the, I'll talk about the rescue squad. And the head, chief of the rescue squad wouldn't say this, he didn't want anybody to misinterpret it. But I kept pushing him and pushing him, you know, what, what do you get calls on? And it came down to over 50% of them are under dry runs or people.
Refuse those people who come and then they refuse.
People looking for a ride to the doctor or, just the other day, he showed up and somebody's sitting on their front steps with their bag and smoking a cigarette and, you know, showed up. Well, my appointment's at 10, we going to make it, you know, type of thing. It's, they're looking for a taxi cab ride. There's a lot of this stuff and I don't, and I think when you get a call, you do have to go to it. But I think you've got to publicize it and people have got to realize that this costs a lot of money, costs a lot of problems. And frankly, the false alarms calls for the fire department, particularly from Solomon Pond Mall, about 90% of them are false alarms. And if you added up the miles, just seven and a half miles down and back, in one year, you could drive beyond Buffalo, New York into Ontario on the false alarm calls running down to the mall. And, you know, this somehow, I don't know how, but we've got to address this and figure out how to deal with these things. So, I really think of accurate, realistic analysis of what is the actual workload. Frankly, I don't, I suspect there's some padding of the numbers somehow or getting the numbers up because that's all we measure by. When I was Commissioner of Fish and Wildlife, I had the Division of Law Enforcement, and we had a professor up from the University of Rhode Island looking into this. And we were trying to get away from this ticketing, how many tickets did you issue? It's a way to measure and get into other measurement criteria, metrics. And soon Bill Weld got elected and I and the chief of the environmental police went and so that went out the window. But we really, I'm really wondering what the actual load is and what is necessary. So, I think that's important.
Yeah, well, I would, I certainly intend to go through these and sort of, you know, maybe flesh out a couple of them. I think, I mean, I certainly, I certainly also think going to the departments and asking them, you know, to, to sort of flesh them out. But I think it's a good, I, I think it's a good conceptual outline.
Oh, do I, yeah, a lot of work went into it, that's great.
No, I actually copied a lot of it from, uh.
Oh, you cop, you plagiarized?
Copy and paste.
There's a proposal from MRI to Amherst on assessment of public safety services.
Oh, so you didn't do any work?
I did, I looked at a lot of other things.
You had to find it.
I had to find it.
Yeah, but I mean, for instance, you know, what, what you're talking about, Walter, is, you know.
I believe it would be.
Analysis of current reporting methodology and reliability, I mean, that's, the subject's there.
Right, right.
So, what I would suggest is, and I'll do, you know, try to do the same thing over the next week is, take these bullet points, if you've got two or three bullet points to put underneath them and you already mentioned a couple of them, put them under there. And let's get them out to the, to the department heads as well.
Sure.
Because again, I think we were aiming for the end of, of the month of, of June, so we've got a little time to kick it, to kick it around.
Okay, great, yeah, there is time, adequate time.
Great, but I think it's a good, I think it's a good start and I think it's a good outline and it seems like, you know, the outline is sort of in the right order and so on. So, I think it should be easier to. Any, any comments from?
This is along the lines of kind of what I'm thinking as well. Coming into this, at this time period, coming into this position, it's what I'd love to see. It's really what I want to see, to, to really dig, like you said, to dig into the numbers. I think that's why I like to give you every month, I could tell you we went to 700 calls.
Yeah.
But what is that, you know, I mean, you see what the numbers are. You know, if 300 of those are, are building and house checks, you know, they're not responding to a crime. So, you know, we do need to dig in and see what the reality of things are.
Yeah, we're worried about the increased calls and stuff like for the Highland Commons. And I was talking with a police officer from North Bro the other day and the calls from fire to Wegmans over there in North Bro Shoosbury line, I forgot what you call it, anyway. Dramatic increase in them. Well, what were they, I asked? What it is, people flicking butts into the.
The mulch and things like that.
The mulch along the gardens and it smoulders.
Right.
Somebody could step it out or have a bucket watering can and put the fire out, but they call the fire department. So, the load goes up. Now, how do you address it? You can't just say no. But he, he said that one thing the dispatcher will ask over there, you know, is this an emergency? And if the person says no, then they say call an ambulance, you know, a taxi or something. There's got to be ways to cut this load down, fire, rescue and police.
You're suggesting we need a bucket truck rather than a ladder truck?
Well, you know, money talks. Fees, fees for false alarms.
We, we have that structure in place for burglaries, but we don't have a major problem going over to places over and over and over again for burglaries.
Is there, is there, is there obstruction of justice charge for those folks that really abuse the system?
Not, I mean, it really wouldn't fit because that's, that's not really their intent to really, to obstruct us and stop us from doing our job. It's more, that's why it's handled at a violent level, fulfilling and coverage like that. You know, if they, if there was a crime that they were specifically trying to obstruct us from interfering.
Have they been cautioned not to call that taxi ride once before? The second time?
The, the problem is, is until we get there, we never know.
That's what I'm saying, once the second time occurs. But the taxi rides are to rescue, not to police. Well, they, still similarly could be charged.
Yeah, it's, you can't, you can never charge somebody criminal for calling for help.
No, but charge of money, you're talking about, right?
No, I'm talking about the charge of obstruction of justice, you know, I like it.
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, in the police, there's some, there may be some situation for that, but in rescue, it gets a great stretch.
I think once it gets to the community of those folks that are entitled, it might get the message across.
Maybe we need to look into finding a way for them to get a ride to the doctors.
And I think some of that is maybe working, it becomes the elderly.
Really the issue.
Maybe working with the Council on Aging on different ways to get, get rides and, you know, ride share and things like that to get people to their appointments.
Yeah, is this community, does this community have more, Berlin have more false alarms and nonsense stuff going on than other small communities, some of those situations?
No, I would say no, I would say it's, it's similar around the Commonwealth. You know, from my experience, I don't see it as, as morbid a problem here as anywhere else.
Might have more nosy people.
But there are a lot, you know, and there are lots of things to, to think about. I mean, 90% of the time or more, if there is a call for emergency medical care, it's, it's a member of the, the police force that actually gets there first. And so, you know, the, the issue is, can there be, you know, more coordination? Can there be more of a determination, a triage that's, you know, that's done by that, you know, by that officer who arrives there first and is able to see your situation and maybe call off a, an ambulance call if it is somebody, you know, sitting there with their suitcase and.
And, and the problem is, even in that situation, it really can't be up to us to say no because, you know, we may look at it from the outset and say, they think this is just their taxi ride to the hospital and, and we make the call and say, we're not taking you. And they stand up to walk back into their home or their apartment and they drop dead. We, we can't make that, you know, a refusal on transport has to come from the patient.
They're difficult, difficult questions.
Once they call us for service, we have, we have to buy that service.
So, yeah, I think, I think it's a good outline and, yes?
At one point, back when the mall was first built and I had done the inspections with Chief Monta, we had a problem for several months with CS and Robex of false alarms, which we knew going into it, we were going to have problems with when they were wiring it because what they were doing was using all small rolls of wire and splicing everything together. Well, fire alarm runs on ohms and every time you make a splice, you change the ohms.
Yep.
So, that was the problem we were having and we kept beating on them about it, that they had to rewire the building. They fought us and fought us and fought us. So, finally it came down to that we sent them a letter telling them that after a certain date they were going to be paying for the false alarms.
And fixed them.
Well, lo and behold, a week later, we had a meeting with all the people over there and they rewired the building and eliminated it, so it.
No, I think there's certainly, there's certainly room, you know, for charging the people who are consumers of the service by repetitive, you know, false alarms.
I mean, you can't get away from the smoke at the food court setting it off or something like that, that, you know, there isn't much you could do about that, but other things could be looked at.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. All right, anything else?
So, we have all of June, the really, hands this over and.
One of, one of the things that I, I also, I wanted to talk about was typically when we do this, when we have this sort of situation, we, we do appoint advisory boards so that, you know, that it's not just coming directly to the selectmen. The selectmen are always able to, to go as ex officio members of that. But I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea and I think it's a good idea to get some representation from the departments, you know, from, you know, from the citizenry and how do people feel about that?
You mean, create a committee to come up with the scope?
Yeah. Well, maybe not so much the scope because I think we can, you know, I mean, I think the scope is pretty strict. I'm, I'm talking about a committee to work with us and the consultants as the process goes along.
Once we get a consultant?
Yes, once we get a consultant.
No, I think, yeah, I mean, let me read you. I mean, what, well, I'm just looking at, this is from MRI. They, they seem to spend a lot of time talking, I mean, you can tell them that you want them. They talk to the board of selectmen, the town, well, you had a town minister, fire chief, local officials, employees, representatives of the business communities, member of the public.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I think, I think it would be, it would be good and perhaps what we should do during June is to get it posted out there. I think, you know, we have to be mindful of not getting it to be so large that it's a three ring circus every time it meets. But I, I think, you know, five, six, seven member panel to, who's interested in working on this and interested in helping with the interface with the consultant would be a good idea.
Sure.
Yeah, I had actually, by the way, just out of, you know how many boards of fire engineers there are in the state?
14.
I called the, the Fire March, it was 12 today. And then Pepperell did away with theirs at this last town meeting. But what they did is form a committee, you know, it's a two year, it's a year and a half process for the next meeting, but they put together basically what you said, Judy, and that type of a committee to work it through and to get in a, a chief reporting directly to the selectmen. Anyway.
Yeah, and, and that will, you know, the whole structural organization is, is out there, yeah.
It's the structure of it, not the personality of the system.
Yep.
I think that sounds good, so we'll think about that through June and I, I think that idea, we get it. We should have, even what they recommend, well, yeah, I suppose going with the, with the consultant is the process of doing the study, sort of voting at town meeting and then.
Which we've already, yeah, we voted to do the study.
So, yeah, fine.
And then what I'm suggesting is we have, you know, citizens ad hoc advisory committee to work as part of the process as well.
And then go to town meeting with that.
And, and yes, with the recommendations.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds like a good process.
So, for this, we're going to email it to all of the chiefs.
Yep.
And then next week, you will have a chance to look at it. They will, and we will come up with a scope.
Yep.
And then write up some kind of request or proposal.
Yep, that seems reasonable. And, you know, I think it's probably not premature to put up on the board that we, you know, we'd be looking for volunteers for, you know, an ad hoc. We see how many volunteer, as I say, my own feeling is it should be, you know, five, seven. It should be a huge amount more than that because otherwise, you know, it gets to be the United Nations every time we're trying to vote.
I think it should be disengaged as possible, although we should have representatives of the three agencies, certainly. But it, I know in, in Pepperell, when they set up their committee to go through this, it specified that no one on the board of engineers, present board for three years could be on it. So, somebody prior to three years could be on it, but not, not right up front.
Yeah, well, we, we will be able to appoint that in our discretion among the volunteers. And I, I agree, I think there should be representative of the boards and I think that the other people should be people who are willing to. people should be people who are willing to look at the facts with an open mind.
Absolutely.
So, all right. Anything else to say on this one?
You're holding up an advertisement until after next week's meeting, right?
Advertise?
For interested people.
Well, you could put it next week or you could put it this week. I mean, you know...
No rush.
Yeah, I don't think there's any rush because we have to...
If you wanna jot down an advertisement, next week we can look at that at the same time. Okay? All right. Hang on, I think I may have, I may have, when I was shuffling things around, I may have...
The Bullard House?
Yes, the Bullard House. We have a request from Selectman Bigford, a discussion of the letter the building inspector sent regarding the Bullard House.
Actually, the request, I, I put that on there to remind us, I would like to have, rather than discuss it, you know, without them here, I would like some evening, one of our meetings to have the commission in, not just the chairman, but the whole commission and talk about a number of things. And I think we, my, my feeling is we need to get an action plan from them on what's going to happen. I've seen this Bullard House thing linger, I've seen the Hearst House collapse, I've seen other problems. There's a lot of things that could have been done, should have been done and aren't being done. And if they need help, we should figure out how to give them help and get these things done. And so that's, that was, you know, and specifically on the letter, I did ask, I wasn't here at the evening, the, the meeting that it was brought up, the letter, but I did ask Larry Brant to go take a quick look at the Bullard House and my rendition of how he felt, a little bit appalled at how bad the condition was at this particular time and some basic things that need to be done in a hurry. But I would like to ultimately, after we have this meeting with the board, I really think that he and I and, and representatives of the commission should go through that thing and have him look at it in detail and write up a report on just what needs to be done because that can't linger anymore. We better get that Bullard House, either straighten it out or something, you know.
Okay. So that's what I want.
What are our June meetings, sir?
Two, sixteen and thirty.
Oh, yes, I do.
Two, sixteen and thirty.
Two, sixteen and thirty. Well, I think two is a little too soon to have that. Are you, are you rounding?
I thought you were gonna be going one.
Yeah, I'll be leaving the sixth, I might be back by the sixteenth, you know, we could do it the thirtieth, there's no big rush on it.
All right, let's try the thirtieth.
Okay.
Thirtieth then?
Sure.
Okay, will you, Ms. Moon?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Great. That's, that's the only reason I wanted to set up that meeting, so.
All righty. Okay. Oh, yes, hang on. All right, the next, now, I think we're, I think now we're picking up with seven and we have now done everything behind that. And the, the selectmen currently sits as the personnel committee. With respect to this next motion, we are sitting as the personnel committee. And we were asked to clarify billing policy for ambulance transport from a town work We had some recommendations from the rescue squad chief. We talked about, about it briefly, we've watched twice over the last couple of meetings. And we have, we'd establish the following as a draft for the policy, and I'll read it. One, if an employee suffers an injury that is work-related, the town will not bill for transportation via the rescue squad ambulance. Two, if transport is by mutual aid or commercial backup service, the employee may, may receive a bill. This should be turned into the department head. The town will submit the bill to its workman's compensation insurance carrier. Three, all non-work-related transport will be billed as any other ambulance call. So I'd take a motion to approve that as a personnel policy for ambulance transport from a work location.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion on that? There's no, hearing no discussion, I would accept a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Now we're sitting as the selectmen. We have next a discussion of the wiring inspector job description.
So I don't have any problem with the, the job description. I think the thing that I'm not really clear about is the compensation.
Right.
Because it's all over the place. When you look at other towns, it's hourly, it's salary, it's a percentage. I, I don't know how we would determine what we think is a fair pay.
Yep. And we had discussed this, if not last time, the time before, we'd gone over, you know, some, and, and had input from quite a number of towns and it really is, I mean, it really totally is all over the road, ranging from a fixed stipend to percentage arrangements that are similar to ours, varying a little bit in percentage.
Well, no one really had a percentage of ninety-five percent.
No, no, no one had a ninety-five percent.
Seventy-five percent by March, if it was gonna be a percent.
Yeah.
Well, the thing that threw this all off, of course, is the, is the solar farm, permit fee and different things that I picked up, different definitions and explanations of the time involved from people that installed these things and stuff. And then, so the question came that that was a little exorbitant.
But I think that what they said last week was, it's not just being there on site. They make calls before, they travel back and forth, they have their phones, they have...
And of course, yeah, and of course, we looked at, oh, even, I think, you know, eight to ten other towns. And when we looked at those, our total inspection fees were, I would say, at the high end of the middle range, maybe in the sixty, sixty-fifth percentile, but they were certainly not off, off the charts.
Comparison to other towns is a valid, good way to start out, doesn't necessarily, you know, mean that it's equitable, but nevertheless.
Yeah, but I think exorbitant, you know, is, is, is a word that should be used, to my mind, that it should have a market and, and we really weren't out of market on that.
No, that's true, out of market.
Well, are you talking about setting the fees? Because clearly these different towns have solar projects.
We're talking about two different things, I think. One is, we need to, we need to think about as we put this job together, whether we're going to maintain a percentage, whether we're going to pay a stipend, whether we're going to do some kind of blended approach where, you know, maybe they had ninety-five percent for the first five thousand dollars and seventy-five percent there. I mean, you know, there are a number of ways to do it, but I don't, I don't think we have a good idea on what, you know, what's, what's a good way to do this. With, with respect to the building inspector, some years ago, we went from a situation where he was getting paid out of inspection, we went to a salaried building inspector. Part of the rationale for that was that a lot of the activities, and frankly, a lot of the activities that we at the time wanted to encourage Larry to do, involved zoning enforcement. And zoning enforcement had no, you know, no fee attached to it. So, I mean, you know, when we, when we looked at that, we were looking at the dual purpose of the building inspector and thinking that that was a way to get more attention on the non-inspectional activities and to sort of level the sort of peaks and valleys of compensation. And I think that that's been reasonably successful. I think the last time we looked at it was probably two or three years ago. And, you know, some years we did better, some years we did worse, we didn't, we never took a total bath. I would, I would say the, I would say the years of, right after the two thousand eight recession, we were definitely, you know, funding that salary.
But we're not now.
But we're not now and we weren't in the couple of years, you know, before that. And we still had zoning issues in those, in those years. So, you know, I, I don't think it was entirely unsuccessful experiment with, with the building inspector, but...
Well, I haven't, I, I, as with Judy, I just haven't decided yet, feel comfortable how we're gonna set the fees on this thing. Just the compensation, need to think about it a couple more weeks.
All right. Well, you, you, you have a copy of the various?
I do.
The range, yeah. I mean, just, I, I was thinking about it a little bit and looking at this chart and, you know, I, I was thinking, because these are really inspectional jobs and unlike the building inspector, which had a large non-inspectual, inspectional component to the job, that's something that ties it to inspections and fees is, to my mind, perhaps, you know, a good idea. Something, and again, there's precedent for this because when we, when we had the Solomon Pond Mall, we agreed to a different split of, of fees for that. But, you know, perhaps something that gets them to a, my own feeling is that the first few dollars of three thousand or four thousand or five thousand dollars should be heavily loaded toward the inspectors because I think we need to maintain somebody who's interested enough to do it. If you start charging, you know, taking fifty cents on the dollar for the first dollar, then that's, that's a little tough, but perhaps once one got above a certain figure that was, you see, you'd almost look at the first five thousand as a stipend, except they had to earn it because there had to be inspection fees coming in.
Right.
And then, you know, maybe after that, looking at, you know, at a, at a, at a different break above that, that level. But that, that was, I hadn't really thought of that fully, but those, those are some of the thoughts I had.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that at all. That's good, sounds good to me.
What's the fee amount on five thousand? What's the fee amount on five thousand?
What's the fee amount on five thousand?
What would raise five thousand dollars in fees?
At this point, about fifty-five hundred dollars in inspection fees because they get ninety-five percent of it.
If it's a five thousand dollar job, how many dollars in fees are paid by the, the user?
No, I was talking about having five thousand dollars in inspection fees. And, and that, because currently they get ninety-five percent, I mean, that would be, you know, like about fifty-five hundred and so in inspection fees.
So you're asking what percentage of the job cost is the fee based on? And I don't know.
I, I actually think the criteria are, it's more item related than a percentage on the inspectional fee, but on the electrical inspectional fee, so it's not necessarily val, you know, it, it's not just a mere percentage of value the way it is with a, a building fee.
There's a formula.
Yeah.
Just talk about appointments real quickly because you've done police, you've done rescue, but there's a litany of other appointments that I need to prepare for you that actually technically expire May thirty-first, and one of them is the electrical inspector. So I guess you could just go ahead and reappoint on an interim basis.
Yes.
He's already in an interim.
Yes. I think we would continue it on an interim basis, monthly notice. Yep. Yeah, because we're obviously not gonna get through this process by May thirty-first.
Generally, appointments kinda just go on anyway until...
Right, but in this case, I think we want to be free that if we want to go through this process, oh, review somebody and appoint somebody under different, we wanna be free to do that during the course of the year. So I would say interim basis, monthly, you know, a month, thirty-day notice on a, on a change.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
All right. So I think we like, we like the description.
I do.
We need to think about what we, what we wanna pay. We should put this back on the agenda for next week, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, okay. All righty. And then we have, keeping in the same vein, we had a description of a land inspector's, land use boards clerk, and we had put out some information, we've not heard from any of the inspectors.
None of the three inspectors have given feedback, although Larry's on vacation.
Okay. Then let's move this to next week.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have, this isn't in the budget until after July anyway, so...
True, but you have GOTMS that's trying to come online July one. I doubt that's gonna happen. They, they've already loaded the software on everyone's computer, but whatever, it is, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Do you want me to ask the inspectors again? I have heard back from the three land use boards. Conservation Commission chairman says that they don't have a need for it, but they would like to continue to use the administrative secretary services.
That you?
That would be me.
Yeah, well, that's really not an option, but I think they should list what, they should list...
Watch it. And then the...
No, I mean, I, I, here's the thing, I think they should list what they do with you. And if this person is good and capable, then they should have an open mind to doing it with this person and then we can get our minutes, you know, sometime when they're too much.
I've never used you when, when I was chair, did Skip use you, use you much? What do we use you for? We don't...
There's been a couple of things recently, the church property and another property, the name is just escaping me, Ryan? I don't remember, but...
Matthew?
Matthew, yep. It's not a lot, and like you say, it might be an hour a month, but it might be, make a lot of sense for someone who's keyed into all these different projects in the pipeline and who...
Yeah, I'm not, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
It's not, because I think the meaning there is by far below it's fine.
I mean, we never thought Conservation Commission was gonna use more than an hour or so a month, except if there was some, you know, elaborate closing on two or three or four properties, you know, and, and then occasionally you might need half a day of somebody's help.
It's extremely light, but then the second would be planning board, which I'm not entirely sure on exactly what they need, but Ron Varuska was looking for, if not someone to cover the meeting and take minutes, just to handle the minutes afterwards and get them finalized for them typed up and ready to post after approval.
Okay.
So that's kind of like moderate. And ZBA, they don't have a, a chairman, so they're not really concise on exactly what they're looking for, but Jeannie Servel said anyhow she'd like to have someone actually take minutes at meetings.
A recording secretary.
Well, actually at meetings is her own wish, not just, Lynn Ryan is more recording secretary, Jeannie is more, I'd like someone to take the minutes at the meeting all the way through. But Jeannie also says, when she looks at the job description, she doesn't see how anybody could do this in sixteen hours.
I think that, I think... I don't think that when we did this job description, we ever planned on anyone doing minute meetings at plan at, at ZBA.
But I drafted that job description, throwing out there just a feeler to see if I was interested in it. I don't think Conservation Commission's interested, I don't think Planning Board was interested in someone being at their meetings.
Yep.
And ZBA hasn't really been able to tease out.
No, but the, the thing that I'm concerned about on this is, you know, the phenomenon that occurs, the committee will do its work and everything, and then another committee's doing something and after a while you say, what am I foolish? Then they wanna do it. I mean, I don't think we should have the person doing the minutes. We do all our minutes, they couldn't be more complex, particularly when we're having hearings on wetlands and, so that shouldn't be part of the job.
I, I mean, we talked to the ZBA and told them that they could either charge, when they're having a hearing, and charge the people who are doing the hearing and have a recording secretary.
There you go.
Or that they have money in their budget, they have five hundred dollars, they're just hiring someone.
Yeah.
So we didn't hear back from the, any of the three inspectors, so you're gonna send them a reminder that next week?
I do that, yep.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a...
Although next week is Monday and Larry comes back Monday, but I've talked to him a little bit on his cell phone, maybe I could see if he could just come up with a...
Well, if not, let's do it on the sixteenth, but, you know...
On the sixteenth instead?
Yeah, do it on the sixteenth.
Yeah, do it on the sixteenth because I wanted to...
Tell them that's their drop dead date.
Okay.
If they don't say anything, then they get what they get. If they don't say anything, then they get what they get.
Okay. All right, then. Walter snuck out while I was looking the other way.
Yeah.
While we have a, a break, are you in for a particular purpose or...
Yes, did Matt send any speak to you? I'm with NESC for about an 8:15 meeting in Portisland.
Oh, okay, yes, there is an 8:15 meeting, and we are running on schedule.
Do you want to be outside or is this...
No, 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 not at all. Just sometimes people come in and they have a quick question. And I, I usually, if we have a moment to interrupt, ask them if they have it so they don't have to sit here listening to us blather about all the rest of this stuff. The next item we've already talked about, which was the Kinder Morgan dates for the meeting, and I think we've expressed our opinions about that.
You missed the number 11. Status of selectmen, is there a bunch of...
Oh, yes, sorry. And the status of the selectmen's reserve fund transfer is?
Over, overspent.
Yes, I knew that. That's why we needed the transfer.
Right, the, as last I understood, the FinCon is scheduled to meet tomorrow night.
Yeah, and they'd indicated support.
And did you get paid this week?
I did.
Okay. And so they've indicated support, I presume.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll be talking about it again on Monday night and taking our own notes, right, Mary?
I see, yeah.
We'll see you in July.
Yeah.
Well, my read is that, you know, they'll pass it, so... Okay, and then, I was saying this, the other item was the Kinder Morgan, the dates, and I think we've already expressed our opinion on them, setting dates, so... Okay. I'm just looking. I, I, because we're coming up on the 8:15, I, I wanna spend more time than two minutes on the IT, so I'll just send them...
There's also a 16 that just got added briefly today. Executive session. Asset in Donnelley, yeah.
Hmm?
There's a quick item 16 that was not there until this afternoon.
Which is what?
Executive session.
Okay. Okay, then. All right. All right.
15N. Walter, you'd indicated that you were gonna possibly bring this up, but I didn't know if you wanted to put this off, and I give the parties a chance to be present, or do you know?
N?
Yeah, if you look at 15N.
Oh, I don't, let me see, why did I, I merely, I copied everybody on emails to him, so there was no...
You said that you were gonna talk about it tonight, but if you wanna wait, then I could give parties...
Oh, the only thing is, maybe that was before I actually sent Mr. Cho the email asking whether the driveway was put there before or after his house was built.
That too, but you also asked Tom.
It was after.
It was after.
It was after that part of the driveway.
No report.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we, Walter and I talked about the number of reports.
It was redone after they sold that trailer park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But I think, I mean, was there ever a response on that? Has he called the police when those things have happened?
We have since, I think the last time we met is basically since February.
Yes.
We've had five reports, which included this past Saturday.
Okay.
One of the reports had no, ended up having no involvement with Berlin Auto Parts. It was a limousine driver that just happened to stop in the driveway. And so we do have, you know, other documented reports of incidents that have occurred. And it's been, with those reports, has been some discrepancies with timing and what we've been able to see based on the, the video equipment at Berlin Auto Parts. But like I said, there have been documented reports. If there's other ones that aren't there, I would have to talk to Mr. Cho. Trying, I mean, I would be able to, through dates and time, be able to get the actual phone conversation to know. But I think everything, because of what I put out to dispatch and to the officers, everything has been documented.
He did, I don't know, I forgot whether he copied all of you or not. I, I got an email back from one of them, said that he just didn't wanna become a gadfly too much and report too much stuff.
But I think, and I talked to him after we had met here, and that we need to, we need to have that data. Like you said, if we don't have the actual data, we can't have documents. No, that's, and, and we made that commitment to document it. And, yeah. Okay, well, he should get the message. Because otherwise, it's just an impossible, he said, she said situation. And I think we're all sort of tired of that.
And it's hard, a lot of what we've found is it's, it's third parties. That it's a truck that's pulling up, and there's, you know, there's no one at Berlin Auto Parts to open up, and they sit there, and we come up, we kinda deliver the message, you can't either.
Yeah.
And that, you know, wells the problem at the top.
Yep. Does he have signage up there that says drive-by?
There is some signage, and I've actually had the discussions with Vaughn, and he's actually gotten a little multi-truck drivers to wait down at the bottom of the street until they even come up, until it's time to open. We've tried to handle most of the problems as they come up.
Okay, slaughter runs for you.
It's, you know, but that's, that's what we're there for. Whoever calls us, we go.
No, and obviously, you know, if you've got a traffic accident and you can't do it, and you have to follow it up. But, you know, it's, again, it's sort of using the resources they earn. All right, so now we, I think, do we have everybody that we need for the 8:15?
We do.
Okay, and come on now.
Do you wanna sit in the theater or...
Yeah, that's, please. Maybe within reason? 10, 15 minutes is fine. Yep.
By way of introduction, I've been meeting with your New England Football Club. Been very impressed with their organization and the research that Chris and I did on their organization. And have just been having kind of quiet conversations about the possibility of them becoming neighbors in our community. They potentially could be a, a great fit and an asset to our town. We, we've been discussing, they, before they ever met me, we were in negotiations on a meadow in town. And we chatted a little bit about being able to accommodate them on some of our property. And with that in mind, I'll let Brian just kinda take you through, I think, different people on the boards and different people at towns have been quietly asked about their opinions to share with you all tonight in more of a formal atmosphere.
Okay.
Please.
John, I'm Brian Meazon, the president of an organization called NESC, known for football club.
Tom Andrew.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Judy Gorman.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Walter, nice to meet you.
With me today is Jim McKinney, he's the vice president of our club.
Hi.
How are you?
Just, just...
Where I get through some operations in our organization. We almost wasted our full two minutes.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
We, we start to run a clock after the introductions.
Okay, great. So what I'd like to do today is just spend five to ten minutes talking about who we are and what we're interested in doing, and why we're here talking to the town of Berlin. For about the last year, we've been talking with communities up and down 495 and a change about the possibility of us partnering with local towns and building soccer fields. These would be not grass fields, but these are turf fields. And the reason we are here tonight...
Sorry, artificial turf fields?
Yes, yes. So the reason we're here tonight is to just talk to you about what we're thinking and doing, what we're interested in, and just get a sense on whether this is something the town of Berlin would be interested in working with us on. We want us to be friendly with the communities that we're in, and if it's not, we'd look to another town. So, you know, we're not necessarily wed into the town of Berlin, although there's some very interesting positive attributes to the town that makes us kind of keen on the opportunity. First is about who we are. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We've been around since 1992. We're here, and then our purpose is, is to provide opportunities for youth players, ages 5 to 18, to play soccer. And we play at a high level. So most of our U18 players go on and play Division 1 or do into Division 3 soccer. But we're also opportunities at all levels, the younger ages, anyone wants to play to participate at the higher ages, it's more level of play where they can type it out for us. We started as a little organization in 1992, and over the last 20 years, we've grown to have over 2,000 members, so we have over 2,000 players that play. We're located geographically throughout the whole state of Massachusetts, in New Rhode Island, in New Hampshire. But the bolus of our population, where most of the players from, are within a 30-mile radius of Berlin, which is one of the reasons that this is attracted to us in this area. Currently, we rent all fields. So we go all around the state of Massachusetts. We rent probably 20 different soccer fields, and we pay an hourly rate to rent those fields.
And they do grass fields or...
We do both grass and turf, mostly turf.
Now, you have Puma in here. Are you renting the Berlin Memorial Field?
So, so SE Puma was an organization that I was with originally a few years ago, and the New England Eagles merged with Puma a few years ago. And since then, the Dave Tiger, who's been involved with SE Puma, has, has decided to, to partake in a different opportunity, and he continues with Berlin Memorial.
Okay.
And that's what, that's what Puma is currently doing.
So some of our growth is just organic growth, in terms of just growing normally. Some is through acquisitions, like SE Puma group in the metro north of Boston area, in the south coast of Massachusetts, in the south shore of Massachusetts. So we've grown in a variety of different ways, both financially and from a growth projection, we're a very solid organization. So we now reached the point where it no longer makes sense to rent all fields. We're now at the point where it really makes sense for us to own all fields. So we've embarked, like I said, the last 12 months on this project to say, okay, where does it make sense that we build two turf fields, artificial turf, that we can bring our players and play, both games, practices, run tournaments, and use it really eight or nine months a year out of the winter and winter time, but certainly through the spring and summer and the fall seasons, which is wonderful.
And these are two standard-sized soccer fields?
Correct. So these would be 11-inch long, which typically about 110 yards long and about 65 yards wide. And in the back, this packet there, there's a site plan, it's a rough plan, but this is just kind of thinking about how we would restructure potentially. So we're looking at River Road West as a potential location. There's, before I get to that though, there's a pyramid in the search page, and it kinda just talks through kind of a philosophy and what we're trying to accomplish and the way we train kids at different ages and why we do what we do. So it's probably less relevant to this discussion, but it talks a little about what we're trying to accomplish here. On the second page, talks about, a little bit about the objectives, or why any of these are placed. And why is this all about providing a good, positive experience for youth? Both inner-city youth, as well as youth in the local communities. So we try to provide that opportunity for the ages, I said, both boys and girls, both genders. They start as young as 5, believe it or not, and they go right through till they enter into the college age. Specifically, what we're interested in here is in potentially purchasing the Risi land, which is located on the West River Road West. It's about 12 and a half acre parcel. And we're interested in putting two standard-y, synthetic turf fields there with a parking lot. NESC, our club, would provide 100% of the funding to install these fields and expect the cost of about $1.6 million, which is actually the cost of installation of the fields, which doesn't include the cost of purchasing the land. The capital will be all financed through capital we have available. Fundraising in the balance will be through a bank loan. We will, we anticipate having about $800,000 of cash on our own that we've saved up that we will put for this acquisition. And we would like to talk to the town of Berlin about whether you'd be interested in working with us in the purchase of this land. We're interested technically in about half of it. So to put in two turf fields and park lot is about half of the parcel we're required. Our understanding is the town might be interested in open space. We're also interested in open space. So if you were willing, we're not looking for any decisions of the town at this point. But if the town was open to thinking about a piece of that parcel, keep it open space, we'd be very interested in talking about partnering in some way to do that. Why would the town be interested in this? One reason would be, we won't be using the field every single day. So you may have groups that'd be interested in accessing the field, especially maybe on Saturdays. So whether it's soccer teams or lacrosse teams. There typically is not enough turf fields available in the state of Massachusetts or anywhere in New England. These are over capacity very quickly. And most towns and high schools and places are now spending a lot of money to put in these types of synthetic fields, which have real advantages over grass in a lot of different ways. But one of the major advantages is just utilization, so you can use it constantly. Where grass, you have to take off line, you have to seed it, you have to slice it, you have to take care of it, you have to line the fields. Where the turf fields, you can use pretty much continuously, as long as it's free of snow. The other potential positive benefit to the town is just the economic opportunities of the town. We run fairly large tournaments, and then we would also rent the fields out for other large tournaments that are not, maybe not soccer-related. But we run, for example, a tournament in March. We have about 1,000 teams that come in from all over New England, from Canada, from New Jersey, from Virginia. These are parents that come, they bring the children, they stay in hotels in your local community, and they spend money at the shops, restaurants, and hotels in the local community. So that's, I think, a side benefit to the location where they stay.
Talk to me a little bit about the impact of that on such a site. I was reading ahead, and I see that you have parking spaces for 120 cars on the site plan, and you said that you have 1,000 teams, and unless you got one of the 120 clown cars, I don't see. How does that work?
Good question. So 1,000 teams come, play in 20 different fields. Not all of them just one of them. At any one field, you've got 10 teams, so it's only kids. So you've got 40, 40 of the 1,000 teams will be here.
And you're, you know, I presume because you've, you've run these with other locations, that 120 parking places is adequate for that?
Yes, about six.
Without getting people out on the streets and stuff like that?
Exactly. And this, this isn't really a big spectator sport, I mean, so the parents and the kids are coming to watch. It's not like you're bringing other families.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't need bleachers, you wouldn't be like going to a college where you have, you know, lots of spectators. This is really, the people engage in the game, the people are...
So they'd just be standing around the sidelines?
Exactly.
Do you have bleachers?
No, we don't need bleachers necessarily. You know, most, most of the places that we rent now don't have bleachers, almost none of them. The closest, and if you were curious, the closest facility that would have something similar to what we're doing is located in Marlboro, is a four-kick facility, which is right on Forest Street. But you'll see, there's an indoor facility, which is very large, but it also has two outdoor turf fields. And if you look at the turf fields outside, that's very similar to what this would look like here. But there's probably 100 complexes like that in the state of Massachusetts. And they're all kind of same. Again, I wouldn't compare it to the college situation, that's a very different situation. We have a track, we have a high school situation, it's a little different. And these really have, you have playing fields, you have porta-johns, you don't have restrooms typically, and you have people standing, watching the games, and that side of that.
You mentioned that on open space, and wondered if we could go into partnership with you. As I look at this, between the riverfront and the boundaries and everything else, where would you expect the town to help out here?
So that is one potential design. I mean, there's a lot, a lot of other designs, but that is about five and a half to six acres of the total 12 acres. So the whole area all around that, the other six some acres would be open space. If the town was not interested in doing that, we wouldn't lay the site out that way. We'd probably lay it out a different way, and then you'd look to potentially sell off part of the land, whether it's residential, or we'd look to probably put a third field in.
But you do need this much area, you need two fields, right?
Yeah, we need to put in minimum two fields first.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at this, and I don't care how you configure it. First of all, it's gonna be massive earth moving, because it's quite a slope down off of here, right?
It doesn't need massive, I mean, we've been on the site a number of times. There'll be some movement, but it's not a huge amount.
Well, this is gonna be sloped. I, I hate these fields for years when I was a kid, so it's quite a slope. It's wet over here, big seep. But this has to be fairly flat, but this certainly has got to be leveled.
Yeah, so...
And then if you push down, I don't know, this is the riverfront, I don't know where the flood plain now. There's a flood plain down here, too. Are you aware of that? Okay, maybe that's less than what the 200 foot...
Right, that's, exactly. So the, the way the turf fields work is you actually go subgrade, about each instance below grade, and you actually move all the top soil, take that all out, and you put gravel and drainage below that. So we would actually be, you know, we'd be taking a lot of that out, lowering the grade a little bit.
Right.
And pretty below the surface. Now, there's other ways of doing that, you could go higher, obviously depending on... But we haven't had the engineers look at the site yet. That, that would be the next step, if you guys seem like that's something that you might be interested in working with us.
I suspect it'd be all gravel and easy operating.
Yeah, I don't think it should be a problem. Again, we haven't even had soil tests. This is all...
You, you, I mean, certainly my experience, anytime, for various things, I have been...
Yeah. You, I mean, certainly my experience, anytime for various things, I have been down there and you put a shovel in it with gravel.
Yeah, farm land is great for this, because it's usually not a lot of rocks, not a lot of ledge. So, you know, that's where we typically look at. We also would be looking to light the fields. We would be looking to light the fields past nine o'clock. But we would be looking to look at lights and the state-of-the-art lights they have, these Moscow lights, are really pretty good. They shine right down in the fields. So it's not a lot of ambient light other than where the lights shine on. But we would be looking primarily using the fields from four in the afternoon to night and night. We wouldn't be using it during the day. So it's really preset periods of time we use it. Sundays, we use it for more of the day, or during the weekdays, and it'd be off by nine o'clock.
Would you agree to stipulations on that for those kinds?
Yeah. And obviously permitting is a big piece, you know. If we were to go forward to purchase land, there'd be a point that we'd be able to get the permits we need to go forward and have it some indication of town from the, I don't know, the Conservation Commission and the planning board that we'd want to have some conversation.
Have you spoken with them yet?
No, you're the first.
No, I heard that there was a football league, a football league interested. This makes much more sense than it's soccer.
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
It is, but everywhere else.
World Cup's coming up. So the third page here, without going to a lot of detail, let's kind of just break down the cost a little bit, the city of an idea of what we're going to be spending, and then the timeline. The timing's a pretty important trust. I mean, it takes six to eight months to kind of, from start to repurchase land, to actually get it completed. And that's if things go according to plan. You're not delayed with permitting, if you're not delayed with any of the prep work. Our goal would be to have these fields open operational by the spring of 2015. That's what we're working towards, which is what brings us here tonight, is to kind of get an indication about, you know, are we wasting enough time with the town? Is this not something, I mean, are you looking at this and saying, boy, we don't want football fields here or soccer fields in by town. We would prefer not to get engaged at all? Or is this something that you think would be good to the community, it makes sense, and you'd be willing to work with us on? Because again, we see some major advantages that happen here. We think it'd be good to the community, good economically to the community. And I think we have a number of players in the club, probably twenty-plus, that live in the town of Berlin who play for our club. So obviously those fans would be ecstatic.
Plus camp, we do, the Puma camps and stuff down the street.
Talk to me for a minute about what this is like as a surface from the point of view of permeability, impermeability. Is it, is it a permeable membrane or is it impermeable?
So, yeah, so the, it goes into a drainage below it. We would have a rainwater plant, some water plant that would absolutely be done.
So you have a ground, both a rainwater and a groundwater recharge plant as part of your normal process?
They claim, the manufacturers of these turf fields, that it drains seven inches of water an hour.
So it is, it is not an impermeable surface?
No, it's not permeable. And if you look at it, it looks like grass. I mean, the way it's stitched into a matting blow.
Yeah, I mean, I've only seen it from the top, so I had no idea how it operated, you know.
It's stitched, it's actually even stitched into this matting blow. It's pretty thick. And then in between it, there's black pellets, which is really, I think, more old tires. These are recycled tires that they've just minced up and then spread over the field.
It's fun to follow.
What is the second line here? Two fields that times the three twenty-five, three hundred and sixty feet.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Third line down.
Oh, so the, that's the size of the field. So it's three hundred and sixty feet by two hundred and thirty per year. And then you have a ten-foot runout, which is basically the border around the field where the spectators stand.
Oh, is that, oh, that's for the turf?
Yeah, this is the turf itself. This is the actual, converting the actual turf, it costs three twenty-five per square foot. So it's just a square foot cost.
Well, what's the line above it? Oh, infrastructure.
So that's everything below the surface.
Okay, fine, thanks. Got it.
No, good question.
What about the parking lot? What is that? Is that gravel? Is it paved?
Yeah, good question too. So we think it'd be gravel, so something that's pervasive and not concrete or blacked out. Gravel works well for us.
Do you normally hire when you're having like a tournament and you're going to be having large crowds? Do you have, hire police? Do you have someone doing parking or?
So normally we have, people we hire into the parking, in the parking lot. With two fields, we typically don't hire police because the traffic is that big. At any given point in time, there'd be what, maybe fifteen, thirty, sixty cars at one time? So, you know, there'd be a lot during a long period of time. But at any point in time, you don't have hundreds of cars that drive with it. They come in and go on all day long.
So it's consistent versus large?
Exactly.
I can see that, because your, your activity, unlike other commercial activity, is timed on the clock.
Right. They'll be short for five, they leave at nine, the next group comes at nine, they leave at ten. So it's pretty much on the hour to come and go on all day long. And for tournaments, again, the advantage is they're coming for the whole weekend. So they're playing at eight in the morning and five. And they have, they're coming here from Maryland. They have nothing to do all weekend other than go to the Summit Park Mall and go eat out and.
People who play and you find within the whole parking situation there, everyone is kind of just accustomed to how it all works. And everybody's very, it's routine. Everybody knows how it flows and how it works.
Yes. Now, my daughter was in USA, she's swimming all the way through, you know. But the same, yeah, I mean, it's the same, same kind of thing, yeah, yeah.
So I guess where I'd leave you at is, you know, maybe you talk money sells it. But if this is at all something the town's interested in, we would then bring our engineers in to do some more site plan work, to take some samples. And like I said, we are in negotiations right now about the purchase. I'm not sure where we'd go and purchase if the town wasn't feeling this is something that's in your, I think, just.
Would, would you be willing to do a little more elaborate presentation sometime in the next, you know, two or, two or three weeks that where we could get the recreation committee in and have a little more public notice that you were coming in so we could get a little bit better sense for where people are? Because I, I'd sort of like to, you know, I appreciate what you've said here, but I, you know, I sort of feel like I'm looking at the root of the keyhole right now still, yeah.
What we'd probably do is we'd bring in our design engineer too. He'd talk specifically about different options in terms of the site, site plan and the layout. But, yeah.
I think the school would be interested in hearing this.
Yeah. So, obviously, let's see. We meet, I was, I was thinking maybe the, maybe the sixteenth of the week, the sixteenth might be good for that, because that gives us, I mean, you want to have a little bit of time so you can get the word, the word out. Is that constraining time for you?
The week before that working, it just gives the timeline going on. I don't want to put pressure on you guys.
It's okay with me. I happen to be out of town that week, but I have heard your presentation and, you know, I can watch it on video when I get back.
The week before that isn't a meeting date unless you want to.
I know, I understand. Yeah, we can, I mean, we don't even necessarily have to do it on Monday, but.
It's only, we are in negotiations with the property and, you know, if we can kind of keep that moving on.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's certainly okay. As I say, I'll be out of the country, so. And I thought next week was just too, too short to get, to get the word out, so. Ted? Yeah. Do you want to?
Are you gone? You're gone the week of the night?
Ah, yes, I'm gone from Saturday the seventh until Saturday the fourteenth.
Well, we could do a meeting that week.
Yeah, the week of the night?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that okay with you guys?
It's fine with, are you here the week of the night?
Um, I may not be. We've been on the sixth. I probably won't be here the night. But I've heard that still.
I can't.
Can't have it.
Was it so bad?
You know. Are you back later in the week? Because this doesn't have to be Monday.
Right, right.
We could do it on a Wednesday or Thursday.
Sure.
Well, do you want it, so the eleventh or the twelfth?
Do you back in?
Twelve, twelve.
All right, Thursday the twelfth? Thursday, June twelfth?
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Okay. And then you do it up in the big meeting room, maybe?
Yeah.
And if there's specific questions that these warrants to answer for that meeting, maybe you can.
Well, the other thing I might urge you to do is to have a chat with the planning board. I mean, you've got a couple of weeks, but have a quick, at least one or two.
They're waiting.
They are. They want to, you're allowed to go in and shake their hands right now.
Have a chat with the planning board, have a chat with the recreation commission. If, you know, you've got contacts with some of the soccer, have a chat with them ahead of time.
Okay, great.
Yeah, a couple of things just to keep in mind though. I looked into it recently. We could probably have more square footage of playing fields per student than per cap in the new town around number one. So much so that they rented out quite a bit. Talking with the recreation committee, they literally, they said they don't need any more fields at this particular time, although I'm for buying some more open space beside, Jason and I playing field number one. Number two, the conservation commission would not put money into this, that open space stuff. It's not, you know, it's a biological desert, basically. With all that in the middle of it, you know, it really isn't protected. Legally anyway, so to spend conservation funds.
Well, there's no conservation restriction or anything.
No, no, no. But if something is protected because of the river, riverbank offset or flood plain or something like that, we were sort of disinclined to spend conservation dollars to spend something that is largely protected by alternate means. And I think a fair amount of that probably is.
Right. Between the riverfront and everything, we don't have. I think a DPW, which is a hundred feet within the course of the river. I think the two hundred feet is the river plain, but I think a hundred feet is kind of.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I, I'm saying, I'm not saying all of the stuff you're not using is protected. What I am saying is that there's a substantial part of that parcel that is protected by other means. And obviously that may, you know, for us to spend conservation dollars to protect what's already protected is not something we've generally been in the business of doing.
Do you have turf fields for your recreation groups or?
No, no, they're all natural fields.
I will promise you, if there are turf fields in town, they'll be crawling to the old grass that come to turf.
We certainly don't want any turf fields in town.
We can't afford turf fields in town, right? That's why we're here.
When I grew up, we played in hay fields and used rocks for bases.
You're not allowed to.
Don't laugh till you try it.
That wasn't, that wasn't soccer either.
It was real football.
So is the partnership that you talk about with town where they would purchase a part of the entire lot? Is that the partnership you referred to?
Yeah, well, it's interested in two pieces. One, we could ask the possibility, two, just the whole permitting process. Whether the town would be interested in us. What, how difficult would be the permitting?
I think what you're saying is that there's basic support for it as opposed to basic opposition as a lineup, right?
Exactly. Is it cooperation or is it?
And is there a direct financial benefit to the town? Not indirect, hospitals, hotels, restaurants, but direct?
If you have no user groups interested in recreation, so there'd be no economic benefit?
No taxes.
Taxes, true.
Okay.
Was there a time that we set for that?
Seven PM.
Seven PM. And it will be, there's a large meeting room down at the end of the hall on the right. And I'm sorry, I can't be there. All right, anything else?
Would you like me to take that to the planning board? We take our cue.
Well, I mean, I think if, if you're trying to be mindful and stuff quickly and they're meeting here, then, yeah. I mean, I think it makes sense.
I mean, we, the planning board's really who's going to tell you about the permitting process.
Whether this is consistent with the zoning and I presume you guys have looked at that.
I've, I've, I've stayed pretty hands-off.
Yeah, I mean, you need to, you need to look at the underlying zoning, because I, I'll say, if the, and I don't, I'm not saying the underlying zoning needs to change. But if the underlying zoning did need to change, then that requires either a special, you know, or the annual town meeting to change that, and it requires a two-thirds vote. You're talking about a longer process than a couple of months. I said, you want to, you know, take a, take a look and assure yourselves that the existing zoning would allow this use. Because what I was saying was, you know, for a zoning change, you're talking about either a special or annual town meeting and you're talking about a process that's probably more than a couple of months. I mean, you know, if you got started now with something like that, you know, and you pushed on it, my experience in the past is you'd, you'd be pushing it to be looking at a special town meeting in September, you know, second half of September. So I mean, you've.
I've done it.
Talk to him about how long it takes. So to do, that's, that's a step.
And this is a planning board that you're.
Planning board can help you to point, point you in the right, in the right direction on that. And, yeah, but that's, that's certainly a threshold question. And that's something nobody can do anything about except a two-thirds vote of the town at an open town. And we're not a representative town meeting, it's an open town meeting. So that's, that, I would say, real, real threshold question.
Is that the only hurdle to the permitting that you see? Are there other hurdles?
Well, there's, you know, I mean, yeah, obviously there's site plan for this and stuff like that. But that's, to me, a lot of those things are administrative. But that's the thing that's a matter of right and whether you have the right to do that thing on the land or whether you have to change that. And that's, you know, that's a big, that's a big thing. Okay? Thank you. In every, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
In other towns, do you put these in residential agricultural districts, zones?
So where we pursued this in the past, one was already zoned for recreation. So we didn't have to, it was already zoned for their intended use.
Yeah. So you have never put these in areas that were zoned just strictly residential or agriculture?
We haven't done that yet. And I think the engineers would have.
Across the street is commercial, but that side is residential. That's residential agriculture, that parcel, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
We keep talking about the five, six houses.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, so that would be something that would be interesting, I think, for you to discuss with the planning board. You can get yourself a copy of the zoning bylaw. But that's a real, that's a real threshold problem. And if you've never developed outside of a commercial or a specifically zoned area, that's something to look at right away. Okay? All righty, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks, yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
You too.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing in the business.
I don't need it. I, you know, I just wanted.
Otherwise I'd have a quiet Monday.
I also, my brother dropped by a letter.
Yes.
That was the real, the reason I was supposed to be here at eight fifteen. I don't know whether that came up.
It's in the appointment folder, Tom.
Oh, gotcha.
What you guys know.
Yep.
Keith reviewed that.
Have a seat then, for two seconds, and I think we, you'll do this one pretty quickly, right?
Keith reviewed it today and he said that's.
You were hitting fields out.
I was hitting golf balls maybe over too much.
Everybody would have a river bridge the next ten days or so to inspect our property.
Thank you.
Just to get her beat to, we were disappointed to lose her, but we think that there's been some conversations with her. We think she's going to be just great.
I didn't ask you, do you have any, any thoughts on that?
I just had some concerns with the layout of the field and proximity of the road and where they would pick their balls and things like that. And whether they have netting and things like that and would that be permanent? Having, in my past experience, pulled howls out of soccer nets and things along those lines. Would it have become a concern in that, number one?
The team is the Riverboks team, which also included a representative of your office from the highway department.
Wonder what they would look at, vending and things like that during events, if they bring trucks in that, you know, ice cream type trucks or things we'd have to worry about permitting along those lines too.
Planning board. Were you?
Yeah, some little drivers and.
So this is just an indication?
Yeah, this is just.
Indication of what, status quo, okay.
Where we're, where we're at.
All right.
Our, our goal is to get them to have us start putting the contract together on the internet so that that's done, just like we're advancing a lot of work in anticipation. It's just one of the items that needs to be advanced.
All right. This letter represents a sort of report of the status quo of the project down there. As was just indicated, it's also being issued in connection with a change in personnel. So it kind of benchmarks where we are at that change. I've, I've looked over it. It seems reasonable from what I've heard. And you said Keith has looked at it in detail.
He, he, sorry.
All right, sorry.
Wanted to just make sure that you.
Somebody said that.
Wanted to make sure that you knew that he thought it was just everything they've been discussing recently.
And it does seem pretty just factual. I don't know if anybody wants to take a look at it, wants you to read it or anything like. I, I've read it, but unless you want me to read it.
Just a show of faith, I'll go by your word.
All right, then I would, I would accept a, a motion to issue this letter to the Massworks Infrastructure Program at the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Here and now, a call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, all right. Sign that.
I'll scan and send it to you so you can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that note, thank you very, very much.
No problem.
We may, we're maybe sitting in the back room on the eleven to twelve, whatever.
All right.
Excited to entertain these fellows.
All right, thank you.
If people have questions, of course, send me.
Okay.
Try to answer them, try to guide them along a little bit.
All righty. I think then with the exception of one executive session item, we have nothing left.
I T.
Oh, the I T. Okay, you're right. Man, I was hoping, put that off to the week I wasn't here.
Tried, but, yeah.
I think we need to have another meeting like we've had previously and bring everybody in.
Yep.
Because it's not getting any better.
No, no, I mean, some of the things that I heard reports of, which is that when the sort of bulk email was restored, it had lost its folder configuration, is consistent with what I've seen in other, you know, in other situations because, but, you know, yeah, I think that's, I think it's good.
I get approached, Richard on this and wondered what was going on. Is he the I T, what is his title, guiding I T, just?
Data Systems Coordinator.
Coordinator?
Mm-hmm.
And he said he was, I said, you know, got to get a call on this thing. And he said they had a meeting scheduled, but it seemed quite a ways away, so.
Do you have a meeting?
He doesn't have a date set.
Doesn't have a date set.
He actually put out a call to everyone this floor, asking for agenda items so that he could build an agenda for the meeting, but I haven't seen an agenda and I don't know if he has any feedback.
But maybe we should have, have him have that meeting right here, is that what you mean? Or something?
No, we've had him come in previously when we've had issues with equipment and software.
No, but I think we need a larger meeting at this point, aren't you?
Yes, I think we need.
Yeah, that's what you're suggesting.
All the people that are involved in this. And I think we need to define what his role is more clearly because it seems to be kind of nebulous at this point.
Okay. Do we want to put that on for the thirtieth?
With other, do you want to make this be a, some kind of different, giving reports or feed, feedback on it?
I was, I was thinking of, I mean, that, Judy, I'm sort of following Judy's lead there and saying that we had to have a meeting of the sort of constituent users of the I T.
Or a letter if they can't get in of the problems that they have and.
So ask different offices for feedback to be either presented in person or attendance.
And I think we'd be most interested in attendance because I think you learn more when you hear people talk back and forth. But if they can't make it, obviously, yes, to have a note. I also don't suspect that we're going to solve everything in that one meeting, but I think we have to have that as a start. You want, do you want to do something on the thirtieth?
Well, I was going to say the sixteenth because we have historical coming in on the thirtieth. Unless you want to have two.
No, sixteen, yeah, we don't have any other.
We don't have.
Going on the sixteen, yeah, that's, that's okay with me.
Why do sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah.
Do you think this would end up like an hour, hour and a half meeting?
I think you could go forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's just a thought, I was wondering, have them have the meeting and the most I T literate of us three attended instead of having a whole selectmen meeting there. Judy's the most literate.
I could tell you were working up to volunteering somebody else there.
No, I don't.
I think that even though misery really doesn't love company, that we all should be there.
It does report to us.
All right, okay, yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to have to volunteer you for some stuff, Walter.
All righty, so the sixteenth and.
September fifteenth or?
No, what I was thinking was maybe we should do it at, at maybe eight. No other meetings that, you know, unless it's really short and really an emergency.
Then we can get through the rest of the stuff.
And then we can get through the rest of the stuff.
Nothing beforehand, make it be at eight?
At eight.
Okay.
And then hopefully we'll be able to get through the rest of the.
That's the only appointment for the evening then would be.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, within reason, if some, you know.
Unless you have something.
If it's a real emergency, but let's try to keep it to, to none because I, I do think it's going to go forty-five minutes or an hour at least. And, and eight o'clock, we'll just get down to it and try to get the rest of the stuff out of the way. Okay?
Yep.
All right, so I tried my best not to be in.
Request for appointment, Worcester Regional Medical Reserve Corps, Brett.
Oh, yeah, she was looking for a date in June. She said that she met with the Board of Health. She's, I don't have a clear handle, there's a flyer there of what she does, but she's like emergency preparedness, she met with the Board of Health, they recommended you talk to the selectmen because you appoint.
Medical Reserve Corps?
Well, I'm not prepared to do an appointment for that in June.
It's not an appointment. Oh, it's not an appointment, like, okay.
I don't, I'm not prepared to have an appointment, delay appointment for anybody else.
No appointment with her?
Maybe July.
Okay, maybe July.
Yeah. Yet another, yeah, appointment.
Want me to, um, do you want to pick it to my date? She's basically available, she's just.
What do they do?
Yeah, now, I, I'm not, I, I, can we pass this along to?
Danny?
I know, to the, to the Public Safety Chiefs too.
Okay.
I, I'll just read this quickly so people understand briefly what this is. Worcester Regional M R C is a volunteer organization that assists communities across central Massachusetts in disaster response, public health preparedness, and community service events. So.
Are these doctors, nurses?
Uh, hang on. Medical Reserve Corps provides a means to utilize your individual skills by giving back to the community, housed under the U S Surgeon General's office, founded after President Bush asked Americans to volunteer to support their country. They're looking for licensed medical professionals, mental health professionals, people with other special skills. They indicate that the region includes Berlin, Bolton, Dunstable, Groton, Harvard, Lancaster, Lunenburg, Northborough, Pepperell, Shirley, Townsend, Ashbrook. Do you mind calling Bolton or Harvard and, or North, and Northborough and seeing if they have, had done anything? You've heard of these people though?
Yeah, we had a Medical Reserve Corps in Weyland.
In Weyland?
Along with our search team and community emergency response team. And they would do some of the flu clinics and, you know, if we had large scale community events, they would have like first aid tents and things along that line and be available through emergency management if there was some type of large scale disaster.
And, and how were they funded? I mean, do you know?
A lot of it was, that we funded it was through emergency management, you know, was part of our emergency management and it was grant funding and.
Were they ever needed? Did you get any documents that they did anything?
We utilized them when we had shelters set up with some of the flooding we had during the, I would just with different storms, hurricanes, snowstorms, and then different, during different community events. And they also participated in most of the community flu clinics that we had. It's kind of a way to, to allow the citizens to give back.
I, I mean, I, I'd love to, to, to speak to her. I don't, I don't see, given the fact that we're, we're doing a lot of things in June, I think it could wait till July.
Okay.
Don't you?
Yeah, so you give it to the chiefs?
Yeah, give it to the, give it to the chief, see if they have heard any time you've heard from one chief, or if they've heard anything. And maybe if you, if you checked with Bolton, you know, Northborough, Harvard, just to see. That make sense?
Yes, report back to you next week and then see about a July date then maybe.
And then we'll see about a July date because we got, we got a lot, a lot of balls in here in June. Okay? Again, it's not my, not my habit to read through the miscellaneous correspondence, but if.
Don't worry, because I highlighted the ones I wanted to hear.
Yeah, no, exactly. Well, that's what I ask people to do, you know, if, if you do something you want to talk about, let's talk about it, but otherwise.
Mass B, mass housing.
Hmm?
Mass B.
Yep.
What is that?
Oh, yes, that's a good one.
What is that, Judy?
Mass housing, green acres, forty B project eligibility.
Yeah, this one.
Oh, okay.
Fifteen B, yeah, that, that one is a good one to talk about.
The state decided that they could do a forty B, is that what?
No, not yet.
It is, it is a statement of eligibility. Mark Rose actually hand walked in a copy last week and then your selectmen's copy is trifolded that came in the mail today or at some point over the long weekend. But it's not the actual application that gets filed.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's not.
It's sort of a preliminary indication that it qualifies, and I understand it.
So what is, what does he actually have in that? How many more units?
This, these are single family and so it's twenty-five, I, I don't see here that he, it indicates any, um, any percentage above a statement of the minimum of the twenty-five percent. So this is a strike forty B and we all know how favorable those are.
What are the total units he wants to put in?
It was quoted in a thirty-two.
Thirty-two, thirty-two houses and that's more on the end of Dudley?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. So where he was going to put apartments, he's putting single families now?
Presumably.
Wasn't there a whole, there was a whole apartment piece to that original forty B one?
Yep, yep. So basically you'd be talking, I, I think what's being proposed is eight affordable, thirty-two total. I, I, I did read it when it came over the email in the office and I didn't see anything that indicated more than the minimums.
Boy, I can't see how the wheat fields are placed up in that area. Title five, you can build it to the sky.
I'm serious, yeah.
What did you say?
I said that the new, you know, the, the new title five, you can, you know, build those zigurats up in the sky if you've got high groundwater, you know? So, um, I do think when this gets to the Z B A and so on, I mean, we have other things in the pipeline, man, I don't think it's a good deal for the town.
All right, what about Fletcher Tilton? Keep going there, see.
Are you going to make us read these anyway?
Letter to Whitney Estates Condominium. I could just ask Mary.
The only thing I know about this is that buzz initially, I don't think it was, I was going by what they say, his name is there, has indicated a willingness to help mediate this, but Eloise has actually not been able to make contact with him about this for the past week and a half.
What is this that we're talking about?
Whitney Estates, and that's the amendment to their condominium documents because they would be looking for a lesser, lesser number of affordable housing representation on the condominium board.
This is going through the Z B A right now.
It is going through the Z B A.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just copying F Y I.
Okay.
It didn't require your action, but I just wanted you to.
Okay, anything else?
Fire Chief E., May twenty-first, street numbering notice. You should put A, B, C, D, E at the top.
I did used to do that.
No, that's fine, I, I can put, it's just.
I think it's just.
It's just a, just a notification that.
What street?
Highland Commons.
Two forty-five.
Oh, Highland Commons, all right.
Okay.
How about I?
Oh, Walter, you can.
I Recreation Committee email scheduling visit regarding playing field treatments.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we talked about that and we were going to schedule it.
Yeah, they could not come for tonight because the long weekend kind of, they're, they were going to try for maybe next Monday.
Okay.